I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. So Tanara, we have, we have a few questions for you. You attend Ri- uh, Citrus Ridge Civics Academy?
Correct.
What's your favorite subject?
My favorite subject in school is reading and writing.
Reading and writing, very good. And what would you like to do when you grow up?
I would really love to be a movie director because I really have lots of ideas for movies, series, and much more.
Very good. You know, Tanara, I think you have to have an outgoing personality to do that.
Yes.
Do you have an outgoing personality?
Yes.
I think you do. Well, again, thank you so much for being here and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you have anyone here from your school? Do you have anyone with you here this afternoon?
Well, I do have my really wonderful mom.
We would like for your mother to stand so we can recognize her. Well, Tanara, thank you so very much. You did a wonderful job.
You're welcome.
And we appreciate you.
I really appreciate it, too.
Bravo. So at this time, the school board meeting for October 23rd, 2018 is called to order. Madam Superintendent, do we have any revisions to the agenda?
Yes, we do. Item C-58, non-instruction personnel recommendations, replace backup. Item C-68, Woodland Wonders Incorporated lease agreement, remove item. Item E-64, approval, external operator for 2019, 2020, add item. Item E-68, bid file number 022-PLA-1019, informational technology solutions and services, add item. Item E-73, authority to file action in circuit court, add item. Item E-76, authority to advertise public hearing, add item. That concludes all the revisions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda for the October 23rd, 2018 school board meeting as revised.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the October 23rd, 2018 agenda as revised.
Second?
So we have a motion and a second, any, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is acceptance of the October 23rd, 2018 school board meeting agenda as revised. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Madam Superintendent, I believe we have some special recognitions?
Yes, we do. I would like to ask school board member Hazel Sellers to please step to the front for our special recognition. Will Beth Cummings, Director of Fine Arts, come forward for the Play It Forward donation?
Good afternoon, Mrs. Byrd, Mr. Chairman, and honorable board members. It's always a privilege for me to come and greet you because I always bring some friends with me who have a little money. One of our goals in the Department of Fine Arts this year is to try to remove the barriers that might face our students in taking a fine arts course. We've identified two main barriers. One is a financial reason, and the other is transportation. For several years now, the Play It Forward group, which is a nonprofit group, has worked tirelessly throughout the year with fundraising efforts, et cetera, to provide us with funds to make sure that the money part is not a barrier for our students, so that they are able to join band or orchestra or anything like that that has an instrument involved, that we are able to provide that for them, to take that burden off of them and their families. So without further ado, it's my privilege to introduce to you the president of this group, Ron Tomlin, and he'll introduce his entourage.
Entourage? And I will put the hat back on. Always advertising. Ladies and gentlemen, as you said, my name's Ron Tomlin, and I've told you all before, I'm a product of the Polk County school system, probably before some of you were born, but we'll leave that alone. With me today, we've got part of the board. Our, our board's very active, some are out of town, some are involved in other functions tonight, but we've got Pat Oldencamp, who is our board secretary, her sister Natalie Oldencamp, who is our money fairy. She's leaving our board, so if you know any good money fairies, let us know. Robin Fleming, Robin is one of our representatives from the Winter Haven side of the county. We've been trying to ex- expand our presence, if you will, to the east side of the county, and right now, we've got Robin, and he's not here today, but Brent Boer, who is with Carlton Music in Winter Haven, he's now a member of our board, so we're trying to get our, we're tired of everyone saying it's that group from Lakeland. Most of the money that we give goes outside Lakeland. It goes all around the county, so we're trying to make sure everyone understands that. We're not just Lakeland. Yeah, we live in Lakeland, I was born in Lake Wales, if that tells you anything, so I'm a Polk County native. Anyway, and the last and not least, because he's holding the check, is Marty Jones. Marty is, has been one, I guess he's one of the original board members, two or three of us are. We've been around since 2014. Marty, you want to bring that on up? And I'll tell you in advance that the real check, the one that's spendable, she's probably already spent it. But, how do we?
Y'all gotta show us up here, too, now. We don't know how much it is. Flip it around, so we can read it.
Turn it around, so they can read it.
We just want to read it, and then we'll get...
Wow. If we could just check, and the other checks that we've set up, and the instruments that we've had donated that we've turned over to Beth, there's something in excess of $100,000. We're still going strong.
Thank you so much.
Wow. Awesome. Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next, with Kathy Bulke, the district manager of the Drug and Violence Prevention will come forward to recognize Interact Alliance Red Ribbon Month. Lori Cunningham will read the proclamation.
Thank you so much for having us. Polk County Schools, along with its community partners like Angie with Interact Alliance, Tri-County, and Pride, we work tirelessly to create an environment that encourages the reduction of youth substance abuse, so children and families can thrive. This enormous task is accomplished through science and evidence-based prevention lessons taught by our classroom teachers, who do an awesome job, and our community partners. The Phoenix Program that intervenes in the lives of our students who are at risk for misusing alcohol or other drugs, parent empowerment, and social norming campaigns. These efforts have resulted in significant reductions in you, in youth use of alcohol, binge drinking, and cigarettes over the last 10 years. However, we fight a real adversary that conspires to make a profit at the expense of our families. The tobacco industry now sells the lie that e-cigarettes and vaping are healthy alternatives to smoke. The push for the legalization of marijuana, of medical and even recreational marijuana, have teens confused about the dangers of this drug, even believing that it cures cancer. Even though most of our students do not use drugs, and I want to say that again, most of our students do not use drugs, most of our students do not approve of drug use, there is still much work to be done. Please join us in our quest in encouraging our entire community to adopt a healthy, drug-free lifestyles. Angie?
Good evening, board and audience. I want to thank you for the support that you give to Interact Alliance to be able to provide both substance abuse and bullying prevention education in your schools. We're in about 69 schools and, and touch the lives of about 50,000 students a year, but as you know, that's not all of them, and so it's not enough. So we keep working to raise funds and partner with, Kathy and Audrey are amazing, and we hope that we can continue to grow and, and eventually provide prevention education for every student in Polk County. Thank you.
Proclamation. School Board of Polk County, Varto, Florida. Whereas substance abuse is the most common risk factor impacting youth and society, and the prevention education programs offered by Interact Alliance have proven to be effective tools in reducing risk factors and strengthening protective factors, with recent research showing that 80% of Polk County students in sixth through 12th grades choose not to drink alcohol. And whereas Interact Alliance has been providing prevention education to youth and adults in the Polk, Hardy, and Highlands County communities since 1985, working diligently to reduce the abuse and underage use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs through community awareness and involvement, prevention education, economic support, and leadership development. And whereas, Interact Alliance serves as the fiscal agent for the Stand Up Polk, adult-based, and Youth Impact, youth-based coalitions for a drug-free Polk, and works in collaboration with the county and local law enforcement to host the annual Own the Upside Prevention Summit, medication take-back events, and establish permanent prescription depositories to safely and properly dispose of unused medications. And whereas, the 33rd Annual Red Ribbon Campaign is highlighted by Polk County's Red Ribbon Half Marathon, 5K, and Popular Kids Fun Run, presented by Interact Alliance and title sponsor Publix Supermarkets, Inc., on Saturday, November 10th, 2018, creating a community event where adults compete in the half marathon or 5K, and elementary and middle school students participate in the Kids Fun Run around picturesque Lake Mirror and Lakeland's beautiful downtown and lake-to-lake area to support prevention education, anti-bullying, and discourage risky behaviors. Therefore, be it resolved that the school board do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Red Ribbon Month. Every citizen is encouraged to wear red ribbon to symbolize our commitment to a healthy and safe environment for each citizen and participate in events throughout the month of October and throughout the year that support a positive, healthy lifestyle. Thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you. Thank you. Will Melody Griffin, State Coordinator for Healthy Kids, and Allison Watson, Central Florida Community Manager for Healthy Schools, come forward for the Florida Healthy School District recognition?
Good evening. Well, I couldn't have had a better segue as someone here that's here to recognize your efforts for really promoting health and well-being at the district level. When you guys are talking about recognizing Red Ribbon Month, prevention education, anti-bullying, risky behavior, employee wellness, these are all things that are important to the success of your students and staff. And as a member of the Florida Partnership for Healthy Schools, it's my pleasure and true honor to officially recognize your school district as a silver-level Florida Healthy School District. The Florida Partnership for Healthy Schools is made up of several organizations, of which include the Florida Association of District School Superintendents, the Florida Chapter of American Academy of Pediatrics, the Cancer and Heart Association, the Florida PTA. All these groups come together for really two, to inform advocacy for school health issues and to recognize excellence among Florida school districts. Scoring at a silver, silver level really indicates that your district is working towards addressing the needs of your students. You have two areas in the coordinated school health that you really excelled in, and I want to recognize those. The first was health services, and the second was employee wellness. And in fact, your employee wellness score was one of the highest in the state, so congratulations to you for that.
Wow.
The Florida Partnership for Healthy Schools applauds your district for establishing a positive culture and climate and for working towards reducing and eliminating barriers to learning. We so thank you for remaining at the forefront of ensuring a healthy future for Florida, and we work, uh, look forward to supporting your district with the training and tools and other resources as needed to continue to promote a healthy district. And very soon in the mail, you will be receiving a silver flag, and we hope that you will place it in a prominent location to recognize your efforts. And Superintendent Byrd, you will be receiving a nice shirt to recognize your efforts, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Melody. I'm Audrey Kelly Fritz, and I coordinated putting the survey together, but I would like to say that I did not do it alone, and I wanted to give recognition to those who contributed to the survey, because it, it takes all of us to put it together, it's quite lengthy. I'd like to, um, have them stand if they're here in the audience, Jenna Kesmarski, Kathleen Wright, Jim Maxwell, Sherri Scott, Robin Chapman, Debbie Zimmerman, DeeDee Wright, Jeanette Crowley, Kristy Olson, and Tammy Durden from the Health Department. I had a lot of people who could come and some that could not, and I really appreciate the board for making sure that our students are healthy and safe, and I thank you all so much.
Thank you. This concludes our recognitions for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. I would like to mention to my colleagues on the board that because of the revisions to the agenda, it's been suggested that you refresh your computer screens to make sure you, you've got all the revisions. So this time, I would invite anyone who would like to speak to any item on the agenda. So if you'd like to come forward and speak to any item on the agenda, please do so at this time. For those folks who would like to speak to items that are not on the agenda, just general items, we'll have an opportunity to do that at the end of the meeting. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward and speak to any item on the agenda at this time?
Can I just ask if the contingency plan is on?
It is, yes, sir. This would, this would be a good time, yes, sir. The, actually, the superintendent's recommendation from McLaughlin is on the agenda. Yes?
Good evening, I'm Jimmy Nelson, the chairman for the Lake Wales Charter School System, and I am here this evening to talk with you again about the, the contingency plan options for McLaughlin, which obviously has to do with what happens if McLaughlin is not able to achieve an A, B, or C grade by the end of this school year. And for now, for this part of the meeting, I just want to remind the board that we have previously submitted a request that the Lake Wales Charter Schools would ultimately be considered the contingency plan for McLaughlin. I've appreciated all of the conversations that we've had to had, have up to this point. Ms. Byrd, certainly appreciate the time that you've taken to talk with us and each one of the commissioners that I've met with. I, I think that there's no point to beleaguer that at this point. I just wanted to be on record that the Lake Wales Charter Schools obviously feel like we would be a preferred option should the contingency plan need to be enacted. We are all pulling for McLaughlin. We hope the Phoenix does rise this year. We are hoping for an A, B, or a C grade this year. We hope that the contingency plan becomes completely irrelevant. If it does not, however, then obviously we just, we want to be on record of having made the request that, that we be considered the contingency plan. If that is not to be the case this evening, I certainly understand, and I won't go again into all of the history about that, but I do want the board to, to understand that we, we will seek an amendment. We understand that that is, that is a possibility. Once the, once the initial decision is made, it's not necessarily written in stone. We would hope to be able to make the case from this point that, that perhaps, and amending that to the Lake Wales Charter Schools at a, at a later date might be a good decision. And with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions that you may have of me, but and appreciate the opportunity to speak on the, on the subject.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. We did have a discussion about it in the work session today, so we, and I did mention that you had forwarded your suggestions about a new contract as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any, any other speakers? Two items on the agenda. Okay? So we have several sets of minutes. We'll start with the minutes of the August 21st, 2018 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the August 21st, 2018 school board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next set of minutes are the minutes of the September 4th, 2018 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the September 4th, 2018 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next set of minutes is, are the minutes of the September 4th, 2018 school board meeting.
Move for approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Motion on the floor is approval of the September 4th, 2018 school board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the September 18, 2018 work session.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the August 21st, 2018 school board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the last set of minutes is, are the minutes from the September 18, 2018 special school board meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the August 21st, 2018 school board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next set of minutes are the minutes of the September 4th, 2018 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the September 4th, 2018 work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the September 4th, 2018 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next set of minutes is, are the minutes of the September 4th, 2018 school board meeting.
Move for approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Motion on the floor is approval of the September 4th, 2018 school board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the September 18, 2018 work session.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the September 18, 2018 work session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the last set of minutes is, are the minutes from the September 18, 2018 special school board meeting. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the minutes of the September 18, 2018 special school board meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval for the consent agenda for October 23rd, 2018.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of the consent agenda for tonight's meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And Madam Superintendent, we have some new administrators?
Yes, we do. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Kathleen Driver as the Assistant Principal of Doris A. Sanders Learning Center. Ms. Driver previously served as the Assistant Principal at Doris A. Sanders Learning Center. She attended the University of South Florida, earning a bachelor's degree in special education. She went on to earn a master's degree in educational leadership and in clinical mental health counseling from the University of South Florida. Welcome, Kathleen.
Thank you, Superintendent Byrd, and members of the board, for this amazing opportunity to serve at Doris Sanders Learning Center. I'm very appreciative of it. I want to thank Ms. Deborah Peavy for working with me for the last two years and the future working with me as Assistant Principal. I would like to thank my wonderful husband. He's so much support and encouragement for me, and my family that is able to come tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Jamie Yost as Assistant Principal of Geno Dell Learning Center. Ms. Yost previously served as Assistant Principal, too, at Geno Dell Learning Center. She attended Florida Southern College, earning a bachelor's degree in primary and elementary education. She also earned a master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern University. Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Ms. Byrd and the board. I really appreciate this opportunity. I have a saying that I love that says, "It's a beautiful thing when your passion and a career come together," and I truly believe that. We have the opportunity to work with some of the greatest kids and families in our district, and we appreciate the support that we receive from our board and you as well, very much so. I'd like to thank April Sumner, who is our principal at Geno Dell. She has mentored me the past two years, and every day, I learn something new from her, and I'm so appreciative for her support. Dr. Stanky has been a wonderful leader for our school as well. She's been there through some difficult times, and she's there to cheer us on through great times, too, so I'm so appreciative of her. And not to leave you out at last, honey, but I'd like to thank my husband, who has always been supportive in my career, and I appreciate him being here tonight as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations to you again. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Donna Camp as Principal of Inwood Elementary. Mrs. Camp previously served as the Acting Principal of Inwood Elementary. She attended Warner Southern College, earning a bachelor's degree in organizational management. She went on to earn her certificate in elementary education grades one through six, and a master's degree from the University of South Florida. Congratulations and welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Byrd, for your approval of me being the principal at Inwood Elementary. I'm really excited. Thank you also for your appointment to this, to, I'm getting nervous here, to Inwood Elementary. I really do count it a privilege to be able to serve the kids in the capacity that you are allowing me to do so. I do not have any immediate family members here with me, but I definitely want to thank Mrs. Barnes. I don't know where she's sitting right now. There she is. Thank you for taking all those phone calls when I say, "Can I call you?" And you're always taking those phone calls. Thank you, Ms. Barnes and Ms. Townley. I think about that conversation with Ms. Townley and Ms. Barnes and Mr. Bellamy. It was a real conversation, and that has really prepared me for this. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Kristen Fowler as Principal of Crystal Lake Elementary. Ms. Fowler previously served as the Acting Principal at Crystal Lake Elementary. She attended Villa Maria College in Erie, Pennsylvania, earning a bachelor's degree in early childhood elementary education. She went on to earn her master's degrees in educational leadership from American College of Education. Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Byrd and board. What an honor to be here. Everybody says that Mrs. Fowler is always so excited. Well, I am so excited. Thank you, Mrs. Byrd and board, and what an honor to be here. Everybody says that Mrs. Fowler is always so excited. Well, I am so excited. My passion for helping every child to become a faithful reader, a great student, is just, it's incomprehensible, and I promise to all of you and all of you to keep on keeping on and doing the work and doing my best. And I brought three families with me. I just have so much love for my families that have supported me over the past. I'd like to start with my Lena Vista family back in 19... And I have, let's see, Laura Fitzhugh. She's currently at Floral Avenue. She's my Lena Vista family. And Pam Barnes was my Lena Vista family. She was our media specialist. And Nancy McClung was at Lena Vista. And let's see, my other Lena Vista family... Okay. Then, I graduated and I went to Churchwell, where Betty Fitzgerald gave me a chance to shine as a Churchwell star. Thank you, Betty, for all the mentoring and the encouragement that you have given to me. And there, we worked with Brenda Turner and Jana Billman and Robin Reese and... Anybody else? Churchwell. Okay. And then, I graduated to the Assistant Principal at Boswell. And there, Marta Young gave me a great opportunity to be an Assistant Principal. Thank you. And my other Boswell family, thank you, Dr. Castor and Kim Hobbs. And let's see. Okay. And now, I am a Crystal Lake Eagle, and you know Eagles soar. So, I would really like to say thank you to my Crystal Lake family, and that would be right back here, Mr. Price. We actually went, worked together at Churchwell List too, as well. So, thank you, Mr. Price. And my Assistant Principal, Swan Yedda Perry. And my Principal Secretary, Tammy Ray. And my Title I family, Deanna Gamble. And I even have a special honor tonight, my Ed Directions mentor, Dr. Lynn Wheat is here this evening too. So, thank you for being here. And you know the special thing about Crystal Lake Elementary School? We are the Community Partnership School in Polk County, so... And of course, I brought that family with me too. We have a Director of the Community Partnership School, Andrea Hagan. Andrea? And we have kicked off our after-school tutoring. We're about to kick off our tri-county mental, emotional, social health counseling. Our portables are there for the healthcare facility, so I opened the door. You are welcome to come and walk with me. I am so proud, I'm so excited. Mr. Hill has been there, and of course, I cannot leave out my family. My daughter Jennifer, and my daughter Jessica, and my grandson Colton.
Stand up, stand up. Be ready.
I'm sorry, my husband is not here. He's in the hospital. So, anyhow, thank you so much for this opportunity. God bless you.
Congratulations, and thank you again, and thank you for the family reunion which we just had.
Yeah. For fan club.
I am pleased to recommend the appointment of Sherri Scott as Director of Student Services and Section 504. Ms. Scott previously served as the Senior Manager for Psychological Services. She attended Florida State University, earning a bachelor's degree in psychology. She went on to earn her master's degree in Counseling and Human Systems and her specialist degree in School Psychology from Florida State University. Congratulations and welcome.
Madam Superintendent, I would like to thank you so much for this privilege and for this opportunity. I come from a family of educators. My grandmother actually worked in the cafeteria at my elementary school, serving lunch to students there. My mother has been a teacher for over 40 years. My sister and my brother-in-law are all teachers, so there's a good, strong impetus to work in education within my family. The other thing that my family has taught me is just the value of hard work, and that a job deserves your best effort. So, Polk County Public Schools has been getting my best effort for the past 19 years, and I promise to give you my best effort from going from this point forward. I do want to take a moment to thank Dr. Kimberly Steinkie and Mr. Jim Maxwell for their support over the years throughout my career. And I do want to thank all of the members of Student Services. I'm very privileged to lead you going forward, and I look forward to working together. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations. Last but not least, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Richard Alderman as Senior Director of Facilities and Operation. Mr. Alderman previously served as the Director of Architectural Services and Code Compliance. He attended the University of Florida, earning a bachelor's degree in Design Architecture. He went on to earn his master's degree in Architecture from the University of South Florida. Congratulations and welcome.
Ms. Byrd and the board, I really appreciate this opportunity to serve in this capacity. I look forward to the challenges we face in the upcoming future, and we will do a good job in Facilities and Operations for the district. I would like to recognize my wife, Diane over there. She's been a supporter of me all through my career, and I really appreciate her. Is Ms. Usher in here? I'd also like to recognize Ms. Angela Usher and thank her for selecting me for this position.
That concludes our new administrators for today.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. And for those folks who would like to leave the meeting, now might be a good time to do so. Do we get a picture? We want to get a picture first.
They need a picture.
Before you leave, we'd like to get a picture.
Yeah, I know. Trying to get everybody together.
Moving on to the regular agenda, the next item on the agenda is item E64, and this is a motion to approve educational directions as the External Operator for Walter Caldwell Elementary and McLaughlin Middle School for the 2019-2020 school year. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Townsend?
I guess we should just make clear that this is not actually entering into a contract with them. It is identifying them as the outside provider, should that be necessary. So, just a clarification to make.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mrs. Cunningham?
Yes, and I'd like to state that, as I did this afternoon in our work session, that I feel very strongly that if we're going to employ an external operator to work on the schools in Lake Wales, I'm talking about McLaughlin Middle School in particular, if it should come to that, I would very seriously like our staff to consider the proposal presented to us by the Lake Wales Charter System. I know there was some discussion today about what the state deems as a qualified external operator, and I don't have all the details on that, but if we get to that point, I definitely want to have a discussion because I feel that there is no better external operator of the Polk County School District than an organization in Lake Wales, living in Lake Wales, children living in Lake Wales, going to church in Lake Wales, shopping in Lake Wales to take over a Lake Wales school, should that be necessary, than a system that's proven its ability in Lake Wales. So, I just want to state that for the record. I know we had a lot of different discussions today, back and forth, but I very strongly believe that they could do the job, should we get to that point. Again, I understand, you know, as Mr. Nelson so eloquently said, that, you know, "We hope the falcon flies." I get that. But should we get to that point, I just feel that we need to look at the Lake Wales Charter System as an external operator, and if they're not certified, or whatever the words that were used today by the state, then we need to find out why and address that issue with the Lake Wales Charter School System, so that they can, in fact, become one, or become certified, or on the list. I mean, there was a lot of different things thrown around today to give them every opportunity to be at the table along with educational directives. So, for that reason alone, and because it is simply, as Mr. Townsend indicated, this is just approving it on paper, because it's something that we have to send to the state by the 1st of November. So, with that, I will support it tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Any additional comments? As I said in the work session today, first and foremost, the focus has to be on the students at McLaughlin School and doing everything we possibly can to ensure they're successful. You know, and the analogy I drew was this, there's a battle happening at McLaughlin School, and our kids are caught right in the middle of that. It's not a war that was started by the Polk County School District. It's not a war that was started by the Lake Wales Charter School System. It's really two parents, like two parents who each care desperately for their children and each believe that they can do the best job in supporting their children. And I think at some point in time, we need to figure out how we best address those kids and doing the best we can to ensure that we're taking care of them and putting everything else aside and focusing completely on them. So, I'm in agreement with Mrs. Cunningham. I think at some point in time, we need to have that discussion. But in the meantime, I think our focus has to be on fully supporting McLaughlin and doing the best we can to get those kids the best possible education. Any further comments from the board? Okay, so the motion on the table is, we have a motion and a second, to approve educational directions as the External Operator for Walter Caldwell Elementary and McLaughlin Middle School for the 2019-2020 school year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, the regular School Board Meeting is recessed, and I am convening a meeting of the Polk County School Board Financing Corporation. The first item on the agenda for the Financing Corporation is approval of Resolution 2018-2019-08, Financing Corporation Amending the 2015B COPs. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mrs. Cunningham, did you have some comments, or was your light?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I forgot to take it.
Any discussion? All right, so the motion on the floor is approval of Resolution 2018-2019-08, Financing Corporation Amending the 2015B COPs. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This time, I am closing the meeting for the Polk County School Board Financing Corporation. That meeting is now adjourned, and reconvening the regular School Board Meeting. The next item on the agenda is item R67, and this is for the School Board to approve Resolution 2018-2019-9, Amending the 2015B COPs. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of Resolution 2018-2019/9, Amending the 2015B COPs. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item E68. This was the item that was pulled from the consent agenda and includes the Cronos contract. So, this time, I would entertain a motion to approve bid file number 022-PLA-1019. This is the Information Technology Solutions and Services bid file. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, briefly, I pulled this off the consent agenda. We had this discussion this morning. This is a service that we need. The function, the timekeeping function is not as good as it needs to be. My concern is that this contract is essentially driven by the vendor coming to us, making a suggestion to us, may well be the right suggestion. Cronos is a reputable company. But I think too often here, in recent years, vendors have driven how services get, rather than need, and going through a structured process that's fair and makes sure we get the best deal that we can get. Again, I don't think anybody did anything wrong here. I'm not, but I don't like this approach to having a vendor suggestion or input kind of drive the need. I've spoken to staff and suggested that we identify the functions that we need to improve, and there are a number of them, and work from the function toward the vendor. So, that's why I'm going to vote against this today. Also, I just should say, this is going to eventually, this is not a terribly huge contract, but it almost certainly will become one. If this works well, then a lot of other areas in the district will likely get this. So, this is more than a $421,000 deal. It's probably a multimillion-dollar deal in reality. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mrs. Sellers?
I'm going to support this tonight, because I got to look at the other districts that are using this, and if you look at the eight top biggest districts in Florida, four already using this, as well as other districts. So, a lot of times, and we're piggybacking on somebody else's bid process that has gone through this rigorous process of selecting. But for me, it's looking at others and seeing that it's got strong support for huge districts using a product like this, and so I'm comfortable with going with this bid tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Sellers. Mrs. Fields?
I was basically going to say what Ms. Sellers said, and I wanted to say that the staff have done a lot of behind-the-scenes work, making sure that everything is in order, and the piggyback, as Ms. Sellers referenced, takes care of some of the concerns. So, I don't think that this was done in haste, and I will be supporting it as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Fields. Ms. Reynolds?
Just kind of to echo what Ms. Fields and Ms. Sellers have said, I also want to thank our finance department for going out and finding where everyone else got their contracts, what their process was, seeing that other people have done this RFP already. We don't need to waste taxpayer dollars reinventing the wheel. This process has already been done several times, which is why we can do this, and I greatly appreciate you guys giving us all of that backup information. And also, I believe at the last meeting, Mr. Peron mentioned that, you know, they came to us years ago, and at the time, we didn't need this. And so, looking now that we do need something like this, we've gone back out to say, "Okay, hey, we need this now. Can we do this?" So, I greatly appreciate your guys' effort on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mr. Townsend?
Just to clarify, I think the contract we're piggybacking on, as indicated by the agenda item, is from the city of Mesa, Arizona. It's not clear to me that the whole bunch of other districts, I think a lot of districts piggybacked off that contract, or I don't know that there have been a ton of RFPs or competitive processes done by districts similar to us. But the agenda item, what we're piggybacking off of is Mesa, Arizona, a city. So, just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Any additional or further discussion from the board? So, the motion on the floor is approval of bid file number 022-PLA-1019, and this is the Information Technology Solutions and Services, including the Cronos contract. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item R69, approval of a quitclaim deed to the city of Haynes City for the lift station at Ridge Community High School. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? So, the motion on the floor is approval of a quitclaim deed to the city of Haynes City for the lift station at Ridge Community High School. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item R70, approval of an access easement to the city of Haynes City for the lift station at Ridge Community High School. High School. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
So a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of an access easement to the city of Haynes City for a lift station at Ridge Community High School. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, at this time, the next item on our agenda is item R71, and this is related to the charter contract for Navigator Academy. I'm gonna ask Carolyn Bridges, Ms. Bridges has come forward and, and give us a little bit of background before we open this up to, uh, public comment.
Thank you very much. Uh, just a quick update. Um, we had the discussion today at work session, and one of the requests was to look and see if we could further define the, uh, location of the school, and also to clarify the process by which that school could be located somewhere else. So I have a hard copy, just because it's long. Um, but I'll go ahead and read it into the record as well. So, uh, the language that we had previously talked about, the school could not change locations without prior written approval from the sponsor superintendent or superintendent's designee. Um, this, this is a concern for this particular school, because they, their application said one thing, then they looked at relocating in a completely different part of the district, um, which caused all of us a little bit of heartburn. Um, so they are locating right now in Davenport, um, and this language now says, "Any proposed change in location must be requested in writing to the sponsor, and any new location must meet the same standards contained herein in applicable law. If the newly proposed location does not result in relocating outside the northeast quadrant and east of US 27, including such areas as Davenport, Davenport and Haynes City, or proposes substantial change to the student population or burden the currently enrolled students and their families," in other words, we don't want them to move somewhere, and it's difficult for the students already enrolled to move to that area, "and does not alter the school's mission, approval should not be unreasonably withheld." So what we've done now is define the area in which the school would be located. Um, it would still, any change would still come back to the board, but this has put them on notice, um, that they are a school serving an area that we really need them to serve, which is that northeast quadrant in the Haynes City-Davenport area. And so this to the, the principals at the Navigator School, they agreed to this, they are anxious to have it approved, because tomorrow morning, they are closing on their site. So, um, we feel as though the rest of the contract remains unchanged, uh, from what we presented to you originally, but I can certainly answer any questions that you might have for me.
So before we entertain, before we have discussion, we need a motion, and I first have to have a public hearing, so we, you're welcome to ask questions, if the board has any questions at this time, but please reserve your discussion for after the motion. Okay. Right, so thank you, Mrs. Bridges. We, we may have some questions for you.
I'll stay right here.
Okay. So at this time, I would invite anyone from the public who would like to speak to the, uh, new charter contract for Navigator Academy to come forward. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the Navigator Academy contract? Okay. So the, so at this time, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the new charter contract for Navigator Academy of Leadership. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
So a motion and a second. Um, Ms. Reynolds, you had some comments?
I just wanted to say thank you, because we discussed this about 2:15, and it's 5:55, and you've got a response and have it completely redone. Um, and I think that addresses a lot of our concerns about this particular school trying to move somewhere outside of that northeast region where we desperately need them. Um, so thank you for your work on that.
Well, and I, I don't want to take self-credit for that, I want to thank Melissa Brady, and Vanessa, and the rest of the staff. Um, we're fortunate that we have a great team.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Uh, Mrs. Sellers?
I was gonna say the same thing, but I'll extend it to the entire team. That was quick work, and I appreciate it so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Sellers. Mr. Townsend?
Yeah, just, uh, wanna clarify process for, for a second. So, so whether they move or not, like, i, if they decide to move at all from their spot, they have to come request it in, in writing?
Correct.
If, does that, that would come to you guys first, right? Administratively?
It would come to us administratively. We would bring it as an item to the board. Um, it would go, of course, through our process, which means that we would take it through Dr. Aix, the superintendent, and then the superintendent would bring a recommendation to you.
So, so if they move across the street, would, 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 does that get brought to us, or is that something you would just handle it, at the administrative?
No, any sort of change in location would come to you.
Okay.
Um, at this point in time, in the contract, we've put a physical address. Any deviation from that physical address would come to you.
Okay, so, so, so they've gotta come back before us, and, and if they do something unreasonable, we can say no, and then, and then like, like I said today, we'll end up, they'll, that'll get litigated somehow, or, or whatever.
Absolutely. And, and by unreasonable, they could stay in the Davenport and Haynes City area, but let's say they move, they change locations to a place where it's impossible for parents to get to, the, there's transportation or road, anything would come to you.
Right. Well, I, I want to thank you guys for the first thing you did, which was, when they, uh, this, this is why I think that pe, that people are cynical about char, charter schools a lot. These folks, just for the back, background, sold this charter school as being in north, in the northeast, um, where we do have needs. And then, lo and behold, they got a good piece of land in South Lakeland, where there's a lot of desirable, um, land and/or enrollment. Um, uh, the, the, so I give you guys a lot of credit for stopping that, and, and getting them pushed back to the northeast, where ho, hopefully, they'll, 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 they'll stand by what they've said they're gonna do. Um, but if they suddenly find a really nice piece of land in South Lakeland again, they gotta come before us, and that's gonna be a problem. So, um, I, I just wanted to, to kind of give the, the, the background of that, and say thanks for that.
Well, and remember, the credit goes to all of you, because you asked the tough questions, and you clearly made that a, a point where the contract negotiations stopped until we were able to resolve that. And that takes a lot of fortitude when it comes to charter schools, so we appreciate the support.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Any further discussion? Mrs. Bridges, thank you for the, the effort this afternoon to get this done. Thank you for, uh, coming up here and clarifying and answering our questions for us, we appreciate it very much. So, at this time, the, the motion on the floor is, uh, approval of the new charter contract for Navigator Academy of Leadership. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And that concludes the items on our regular agenda. Madam Superintendent, do you have a report for us?
Yes. I'd like to remind, um, the community that on Saturday, November the 3rd, from 10 to 2, at the RP Funding Center, we will once again have our We3 Expo, where we have all of our schools, elementary, middle, and high showcase. So, I encourage you to come out, if you're looking at schools and seeing where your children will go for the upcoming school year, as we'll open up applications from, from November the 1st to January the 11th. So that's again, Saturday, November the 3rd, at RP Funding. We'll actually be there starting November the 1st, Thursday and Friday, from 8 to 2, and that is also open to the public, if you wish to come out. But Saturday is the community day. Our next work session will be held at 12:30 PM on Tuesday, November the 13th, in the superintendent's conference room, followed by the school board meeting at 5 PM in auditorium at 1915 South Floral Avenue, Bartow. The reorganization of the school board will be held at 9 AM on Tuesday, November 20th, in the auditorium at 1915 South Floral Avenue in Bartow. I need, Mr. Chair, I need to make a correction, because we said 12:30, but we have changed our time to 11:30.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Um, Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, three items for you this evening. As we discussed at the work session earlier, uh, there's been a federal action, uh, filed to, by the insurance carriers that, 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 um, we're working with on our Hurricane Irma claims. Uh, and we have reviewed that with counsel, and determined that it would be advantageous to the district, rather than to answer the federal suit, to file a corresponding suit, in which the district is, is the petitioner in Circuit Court of Polk County. Um, so the first thing that I would do is ask for authority, uh, to file that petition in Circuit Court of Polk County.
Okay, so, the motion is to authorize, uh, Mr. Bridges to file an appropriate action in the Circuit Court prior to moving to dismiss the federal lawsuit. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Townsend, did you have some discussion, or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. All right. So the motion on the floor is authorizing our attorney, Mr. Bridges, to file an appropriate action in the Circuit Court prior to moving to dismiss the federal lawsuit. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The second thing I have for you is, um, the representation agreement for counsel to represent us in that action. Uh, John Stidham, uh, here in Bartow, uh, will serve as trial counsel, and the law firm of Ciuffalo Baker and Nicholson in Tampa would serve as co-counsel. It is a contingency fee agreement. Uh, if there's no recovery, they, there is no fee. And, and there is a likelihood that if there is a recovery, and if a contingency fee is paid, uh, that some or all of that may be reimbursable by FEMA.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. So, uh, we're asking for, here's a motion to approve the schedule of fees for the attorney in the Circuit Court action that we mentioned just above. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of a schedule of fees for the attorney in the Circuit Court action as indicated in item B73. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, third item, as we discussed, uh, at the work session, there will be, uh, a raft of policies brought to you in November, and I would request authority to advertise a public hearing to be held on, on December 11, 2018, during the regularly scheduled board meeting to adopt revised school board policies, which were heard at today's work session.
Okay, so would entertain a mo, a motion to advertise a public hearing for December 11, 2018, to adopt revised school board policies? What's the pleasure of the board?
Move for approval?
Second.
So a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is to advertise the public hearing for December 11, 2018, to adopt revised policies. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Uh, Mrs. Matthews, do we have an audit report?
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I have an audit and finance committee nominee for, um, your approval. In accordance with the School Board of Polk County Audit Committee Charter and the Finance Committee Charter, I am requesting school board approval of a nominee for the Joint Audit and Finance Committee. Mrs. Lori Cunningham is nominating Mr. Travis Keys, an Assistant Vice President and Commercial Relationship Manager for Center State Bank. Mr. Keys previously held key leadership positions at small businesses in Polk County, providing expertise in business management, finance, IT technology, policy development, purchasing, procurement, safety, and sales. In addition to his professional career, Mr. Keys coached baseball at Haynes City High School, is a member of the Haynes City Rotary Club, and has been the president of the Spring Pines West Homeowners Association since 2015. A proud product of Polk County Schools, he attended Dundee Elementary, Boone Middle, and Haynes City Senior High School. He and his wife Krista have two daughters, Caitlin six, who attends Davenport School of the Arts, and Karina, who is one. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree in organizational management with a business management focus, and a Master's degree in organizational leadership for Palm Beach Atlantic University. Mr. Keys' three-year term will commence with your approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Matthews. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve nominee Travis Keys for the Audit and Finance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Travis Keys to be our next, um, member of our Joint Audit and Finance Committee.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? So the motion on the floor is approval of nominee Travis Keys for the Audit and Finance Committee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Matthews, did you have any other, uh, reports for us?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so this time, we'll go to the, uh, board members' reports. We'll start with Mr. Townsend.
Uh, just wanted to, to briefly, uh, commend all of the bands who performed at the MPA. What, what does MPA stand for, again?
Music Performance Assessment.
Music Performance Ass, Ass, Assessment. If, if you get a chance to do, to do that next year, I would recommend it for everybody. It's, it's essen, essentially 12 halftime shows, or how, how, as close as we have. And they're, and they're all, they're all great. Um, I think I wanted to give a particular shout-out to Mulberry High. Um, they're, uh, spoke, spoke to their prin, principal, and, and they have, like, 10% of their kids are in the band from, from that school. They, they have, uh, kids who play on the fo, the football team, and/or, or who are cheer, cheerleaders, who, like, at halftime, go out and, like, do band and, and do band stuff. So, uh, I, I think, I heard someone say that you can tell the health of the school by the, by the engagement of its band. I, I think that's probably pretty true. Um, and, and I think that, I hope that's, that's so, something that we'll really fo, o, focus on and, and spend money on, uh, as, as money becomes avail, avail, available to us. And, um, I also just wanna, well, I guess, this has become a tradition. My, my tie stalker is back. This is, anyway. There, there you go. Anybody wanna, wanted, wanna tie? This is like the 20th one I've gotten, but, I don't know. I, I throw them away, they're not gifts. I don't, I don't, I don't take them as gifts, they're, they're, they're refuse. So, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Mrs. Cunningham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I just want to do a shout-out. Um, we have recently been, um, holding some different, um, half-cent sales tax meetings to educate the public, and, um, we had one up at Davenport School of the Arts a few weeks back, and I just want to thank Mr. Jason Pitts and Ms. Pam Luce for coming out and, uh, supporting that event, and being able to speak. Um, if none, if any of you have not seen the presentation that Mr. Pitts does regarding, um, the financial situation of our school district, and how this will positively impact our situation, you need to get a copy of his presentation, his PowerPoint. It is absolutely phenomenal and, and directly on point. So I urge any community organizations, or anyone, um, out there who's listening tonight, um, we do have a wonderful PowerPoint that, uh, can be presented. As a result of his effort that evening, and being able to enlighten the Davenport community, there was quite a few people, it was held in the auditorium there, um, I would say there was well over 100, 150 people in attendance. Um, they were so inspired to try to help in this half-cent sales tax initiative, um, that I'm very excited tonight to share with you a video. Uh, it was created, directed, casted, and filmed, and edited by a group of parent volunteers from the Davenport School of the Arts community called Polk Parents for the Half-Cent Sales Tax. At this time, I would like to draw your attention to the monitors, so that you can see this video.
Do you know what your half cent did?
Oh, it's too heavy, boss.
We can make it, we can make it.
Higher, a little bit higher.
That should do it.
Half-cent sales tax builds Polk schools.
Isn't that awesome? So I would just like to give a shout-out and a thank-you, um, to the Davenport School of the Arts PTO and the parent volunteers. Um, specifically, Shalonda Lacome and, um, Ms. Carmen Morrow, and, um, Ms. Stacy Simmons are the parents who put this video together, edited, created the whole nine yards, and our, our very, very talented student actors are Alina Lacome and Parker Simmons. And so, congratulations, kids, we are so proud of you and all that you did to put this video together. And I've been told to stay tuned, because the next one is going to feature Abraham Lincoln. So check your social media, 'cause they're working on a sequel to this video. So, and that concludes my report. Oh, and let me just say, I am 125% in favor of the renewal of the half-cent sales tax. Our district desperately needs it, and if anyone has not seen our presentation, or has questions, I would direct you to call our staff here at the, at the district office, or any of the board members sitting here.
I have signs at the back of my car.
Yeah.
If you want to meet me outside.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. Mrs. Sellers?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want- I, too, want to mention the band performances last Saturday night, and I want to in particularly thank our band directors. They are awesome in this county. What those students can do creatively, musically, physically, is just amazing, and I will tell you, we cannot possibly be paying our band directors for the work that they do with those students, because it was beyond amazing. So, thank you to each and every one of our band directors. What a difference you're making in those kids' lives. And I also want to thank our new acting director for our, I always get the title wrong, Mrs. Byrd, for our Polk Academies, it's multiple pathways, maybe, Mr. Steve Cochran. I know that I attended a meeting that Polk Vision put on for, it says, "Finding Your Future Workforce Education and Industry Roundtable." They've had several across the district. I attended the one in Barto, and our people that work with our Polk Academies were at the table, listening to industry, they're listening to community leaders, and they are ready to provide any industry, any business, with the workforce that they need. So, that also takes a lot of extra time, so I want to thank all of the work that I've seen the people involved with our Polk Academies do for our students and for our communities. And just want to remind board members, once again, I mentioned it in work session, hold the November 8th date to meet with leadership Barto, and tentatively, it's at 3:30, but Susan will let you know the permanent time very soon. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Sellers. Ms. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to, again, FBA, or it used to be Florida Band Association is what it was called, it's MPA now is how they refer to it, but it's absolutely incredible to see what those bands do. Winter Haven, I've been to the Winter Haven football games, they dance. With, like, the entire band sets their instruments down in the middle, and they dance, which is so impressive to me. But these band directors go above and beyond, and every one of them is absolutely incredible. Secondly, and I know I said it the last one, that I wouldn't bring it up again, but Winter Haven Public Education Partnership Lip Sync Battle was two weeks ago. I got to compete, I did not win, but I was the only performer that got straight tens based on their performance, and I had one of the best backup dancers in the world, Mr. John Hill. We had enough videos today, but I do have a video that I will save for a later date, because it was raining men in Winter Haven, and it was pretty incredible. So, we raised $40,000 for public schools in the Winter Haven area, which is awesome. I mean, they're doing a ton of work in Winter Haven to make sure that their public schools are top-notch and have the greatest opportunities. So, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Mrs. Fields stepped out for a moment, so I'll reserve some time for her to offer her comments when she returns. I'd like to speak just a few minutes about the half-cent sales tax. I'm a fiscal conservative, I'm very leery of taxes, but this is critical to our school district. Over the past decade or so, we've seen our revenues decreased from different sources, I use the word decreased, cutback, whatever term you want to use. We don't have access to over $110 million per year, that's revenue that we don't generate anymore, that, from my perspective, is a cut. And in particular, we've seen our facilities funds, called PICO, cut from $32 million a year to under $2 million a year. This tax is critical to us, and so, you know, I'm supporting this. We had a closed session where we talked about our need for security and the safety of our students, and the safety of our staff, and we tentatively agreed to a budget for that. We need this half-cent sales tax to pass to implement that budget. To, you know, we've seen some absolutely horrendous things happening throughout our country, we want to make sure that our students and our staff are safe, and it's going to be critical that we get that funding to do that, as well as to upgrade schools, build new schools, and to renovate schools. So, like Mrs. Cunningham, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to call and up it a little bit to 130%. It's that important to us. So, those are my comments.